Okay, let's call this meeting in order. Please stand so we can recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We'll start with a roll call. Greg Smith.
President.
Lori Quinn. Mike Schneider, president. Adrian Saunders.
President.
Robin Simpson.
President.
Jason Osborne will not be here tonight. We have a quorum, let's proceed. We will begin with a review and approval of the minutes. June 5th should be tabbed for.
Actually, the documents for the June 10th special meeting are also included.
Okay. We need to do those independently separately, or can we do them both at the same time? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 5th, 2025, and the special meeting minutes from June 10th, 2025.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from the June 5th and the June 10th meetings. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the meetings of the Board of Aldman's meeting for June 5th and June 10th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the Mayor's report on product peak. It's very short. I need to request that the Administration Committee place on their agenda the selection of five members to what we call a Board of Adjustments for our ordinances. I would like for you to undertake that at your next meeting. You convene and see if we can come up with five names. They can be citizen members, of course, led by or not led by an ordinance. Simply your call up to you guys, how you want to structure that Board of Adjustments.
The, you gave us a couple of meetings ago, an outline of the functions of the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah.
Okay, just refer back to that.
We can certainly go back and review our ordinances and pull that back up and get that to you guys if you need for me to do that, so let me know. The next thing, I think everything else here is going to be handled within the department reports. If not, I'll bring them up during those reports. So that includes my report. Next on the agenda will be the city clerk's report, found over tab six.
Just have a couple of things real quick. The annual Murma Conference is coming up, July 23rd or 25th. There's a requirement for our annual evaluation. We do need to be represented at the conference. The rates for a member to attend are $350. The rates for mayor or council to attend is $185. And then the hotel is $179 a night. And of course, this will be for any department, street, place, whoever would benefit from going to the conference. The agenda should be in there for you to look at too as well. But I just need a motion to approve registration for...
Do we have, like, people from the city that are planning to attend?
We did have one, however, that's changed.
Alex was gonna go, I think, right?
Right.
I'm sure Alex was probably gonna go.
He was the one, yeah. We had another one that was set to attend, and that's all been changed too. But, so, right now, as far as someone from the administration, I don't have anyone. But, so, you know, we've got some time, you know, to get, you know, that filled. We just don't want to miss representation, because it will be reflected on our assessment. So you can register, say a direct visitor.
Oh, reserve.
There is a price difference by July 6th, after July 16th.
Correct, that's why, yeah.
That's why you noted that.
That's why I noted that RCP data.
So, were you able to cancel the other registration?
Nothing's been done yet with registration. It just now opened up.
Oh, okay. Cool.
But I would just need a motion to approve elected official or employee.
Can we just say representative from the city? I'll make a motion for a representative of the city to attend the Murma Conference, which would include the registration and hotel expense.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the attendance of city personnel to the annual Murma Conference. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve attendance to the Murma Conference by city personnel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
The next item. Jackie and Phoebe, they walked the cemetery two weekends ago. And Jackie always goes around each year, identifies stones in the cemetery. I've included those in her report there to look at. We do normally set aside money each year to cemetery stones. If this is something we want to continue to do, we would need to just go down to the...
Just to confirm, we have money in the budget this year, I know for it. And this is what we're trying to use it. This is the time that we're gonna use that budget to finance it.
Correct. I notice, I believe there's 12 on the list. One of them, it says it just needs to be, the top, just needs to be put back on. I don't know if that's a street department.
I believe it's one of the big tall ones. I mean, it's not huge tall, but it's probably four or five foot, I think. Row 12, lot 25, and section B.
Yeah, I can show you. Section D.
D.
But that's something that we want to continue to do.
Since we have funded budgeted, I'll make a motion to repair the cemetery stones identified.
How do you state that, Robin?
I'll make a motion to...
Well, why don't, I mean...
We have to put it out for bid, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor to go out for bids for the repair to the stones in the cemetery. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to go out for bids for repair of the cemetery stones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
And you will see later on in the bills to pay, there is reimbursement in there for Jackie for time spent at the cemetery during this course. BSNA, we talked about this a little bit the last evening, about putting payroll and HR back into our package. We had a conference call, wasn't a lot of everyone in college, with BSNA the other day, Mike came and sat in front of us. If this is something we want to do, they need to know as soon as possible so that we can integrate it into our package. Because they are setting a timeframe right now for all of our models, how we're gonna come online, how we're gonna do the conversion, everything like that. And this would be factored in if we want to continue. If we want to go this route. I would like to go this route, you know. I know in the end it will be beneficial for us to have it in-house. My only concern is just making sure that staff are able to do it, is my concern. But I know...
Just to review kind of what you talked about last time. What are we paying for, you know, how much roughly per payment service?
It's about $15,000 a year.
$15,000 a year, so that means you could justify some staff just on that.
Yeah, because this will be the cost of about, so it'll be $200 a year after we purchase the initial software, which is this $37,000.
And we have had issues in the past with, they're not filing the payroll taxes and stuff correctly.
Well, they filed them, I believe. They were actually withholding due to taxes, and we're exempt from due to...
Oh, so there was, okay.
Yeah. And I called them when I noticed it, and they've got it all correct and everything.
Jeanette, when will this roll out? I know you're talking about staffing, and I know currently we're struggling.
Everything will roll out. The go-live date is December 8th.
Okay.
Everything would be December 8th, with the exception of utility bill. And that will be second quarter next year. However, when we spoke to them online, and we got to talking about our utility billing right now, they feel a lot better with being able to get our information from G-Works now than they did before. Because G-Works, they've been working, of course, with G-Works in other towns. And they haven't really been coming with the information. But we aren't completely on cloud, or whatever, cloud-based, I guess. And so, we still have a lot of that customer information here. And so, they feel like things might go a little slow, of course. So it could be sooner for utility billing, but everything else is December 8th. There's gonna be lots of calls in between then. I was thankful Mike was there the other day, since we don't have Alex here, you know, doing IT stuff. Mike was a great help on things. There's gonna be a lot of...
But your preference would be to include HR and payroll into it? Okay, okay.
And after the initial setup, it'll actually be half the price of what we're paying.
It will. I mean, at first, it's gonna be a bigger expense to quickly...
Capture the caption, yeah.
It sounds to me that you have reservations relative to having the appropriate staffing to implement payroll. Payroll will come online December.
Yes.
At the same time.
Yes. Which would work out great, you know, at the end of this year, starting with next year, you know, as far as W2s go, stuff like that.
My recommendation to the board would be to give that most consideration to approving it. And Admin will have to make a work. I've heard many comments over the past year, four years, a couple of months, relative to issues with Tessian from various different aspects, from data entry to problem solving to encrypt, I'll use the word usually transactions, and the ability to, for us to do anything, because we have a deadline that we have to meet with them. And if you don't meet that deadline, or your hands are tied, relative to payroll issues and checks. It's your call.
Now, I will say, Sina at Tessian, she's helpful. I mean, she's usually, she's our account person, and whenever we do reach out to her, and she's always there. Very helpful. I mean, it's not, I wouldn't say it's any of their customer support issues. There's just, I know our staff, our employees would...
Well, it just makes sense to have all in one place, to me.
I agree.
Yeah. Something gets broken, it's broken internally, instead of here and there and everywhere.
But I'll talk to our general ledger, our bank, everything.
Yeah. That'll save you a ton of time.
I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the addendum of the payroll and HR software to the BSNA enterprise software that we purchased in the amount of $37,050. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the purchase of the payroll, what is it called? Payroll HR module to BSNA software, amount of $37,050. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. The next thing we have on the agenda is the city attorney's report. Mr. Russell?
Nothing really to report. I've worked on the ordinance and the library lease, which are in the packet. We'll discuss those later.
Okay.
Other than that, nothing to report.
So we'll discuss whatever is appropriate during the appropriate time, relative to the ordinance and/or the library contract. Okay, very well, thank you very much. Next thing on the agenda is authorize guests, speakers, Monroto City Area Fire Protection District. Good evening.
Howdy. So, if y'all heard or not, we've got the money for fireworks. Coming for permit to be able to shoot them. July 4th will be starting. Hopefully, per shop, need nine o'clock. I did know, I'll just bring it up to get a permit, and see what we need to do to be able to shoot them all.
Are you guys planning on the same place as you did, I guess, last, last year?
Same place as always.
I don't know the process. Does anybody know?
Does it just require a motion?
It would just require a motion. Yeah, just an approval from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for our department to set off fireworks on July 4th.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the permit for the Monroto City Area Fire Protection District to perform the annual fireworks display. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the permit for the Monroto City Area Fire Protection District to perform the fireworks display this year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
I got a permit here, a rich head.
Okay.
Just your signature on it.
Good enough. Bring it up, bring it up now. Plus, the board has opposition to me doing that.
We just...
It does.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Nice.
Appreciate your help.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda is new business. Okay, I see that library's down there. Okay. An ordinance repealing section 86.1, 6.3, 4G, and replacing it in the municipal code. Let the debate begin.
So, I'll lead off. I mean, I have concerns about the ordinance. First, when I was writing, I wrote it up the way Jeanette requested. It's in the packet. My concern is that it's gonna expose the city to litigation, because you're setting up a system where the council's gonna be having to make determinations on these refunds, on numbers, based on numbers that aren't objectively quantifiable. So, I mean, I understand the car wash is gonna lose money to, or water to evaporation, people driving off with water in it. But, I mean, a lot of businesses in town lose money, or lose water, due to evaporation. So, the issue I see is different businesses coming to the council, getting different results, and then filing lawsuits against the city. So, I reached out to Missouri Municipal League about that concern. They agreed. They also brought up the fact that it could violate Article 6 of the Missouri Constitution, because it's giving money to a certain group of people over other groups. So, they would be, if they get this rebate money from the council, other groups wouldn't get that. And then, it's based on, you know, what the council, and future councils. I mean, you gotta remember, it's not just this council, it's future councils and the decisions they might make. And, I mean, Municipal League's answer, you know, their first question was, does your city have a sewer saver ordinance? And I said, well, yeah, that's the way it's written now. So, their suggestion, and kind of what I've been thinking, is that, you know, giving reductions based on numbers that can be quantified is fine. You know, but we need to, but if we're gonna start giving reductions based on other numbers that can't really be quantified, then the city could be in a bad position. That's my take.
Well, as you know, I was in support of the changes to the ordinance, but after hearing John's comments, I can't, I can't probably move forward with this, because I can't risk the city litigation, litigation almost to parties in the future. And I'm also concerned what he said too about future councils.
The, is there any questions or further debate we need to have?
I don't know, I guess you've already, there was some mentioned before that they'd done it in other places or something, but...
Well, there was IS Municipal League, and they said, I mean, at least not in Missouri.
Yeah, I have looked, and I have not found a single ordinance, even in Arizona, where it's dry. They would have more evaporation there, but I don't want it.
Or they brought up, you know, you know, businesses, I can't really think of, like, you know, the nursing home, wonder mats, even residences using their dryers. I mean, they...
Yeah.
You know, the water that would go out, evaporation, putting future councils, you know, having to make determinations on things like that. Because everybody, I mean, everybody loses some due to evaporation. I mean, y'all could, you know, cross the border, say everybody pays 90% or something, but then you have to raise rates, probably, to pay for that service on the sewer.
Quite much.
But it's up to, I'm not the decision maker.
Well, I feel like we have you here for a reason, we should listen to you.
Yeah. When that was, wasn't that the director of MML that came?
It was Stewart Hanks.
Yeah, no, he's not the director.
And going against the Constitution's not exactly a smart move, I don't think.
Without a motion, we can't move forward. Okay. Next thing we have are the council committee reports, planning and zoning. I do not see a representative of planning and zoning here.
We did not have any planning and zoning meetings, yeah. I was, no, I'm not chair, I was the council representative on the planning and zoning. Our chairperson...
Is, is, so are.
I still am.
I'll clarify that now.
Clarify, yeah, you're right, I still am, yes. Still have the, the council representative on it, but our... Who was our chair? It was...
Yager.
But?
Yeah, Yager.
Yeah, Mr. Yager.
Mr. Yager.
Yeah. It's our, it's our chair. But, yeah, we haven't had any, any issues.
Next on the agenda will be the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Do we have anyone to hear? I wasn't sure if they were gonna make it, because the date change kind of passed along.
Okay.
One thing that we wanted to bring up is we have received the invoice for first part of some of the parks, the new equipment at North Park.
Okay.
And so, we wanted to present the invoice for approval.
And the way this grant works, the city will pay the entire invoice up there, and then we would obtain our reimbursement from LWSC.
Okay, so this will not be part of the bills payable process?
It is not.
It's separate?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have a question, and this is for Greg. We still have additional, Rodney, I'm into your assistance. We still have additional work, even after the installation, relative to the building and the fencing. The fencing's not part of their process, is it?
Yes.
Yes? What about the building?
The bathroom?
Uh huh.
No.
Okay. So I'm curious how that's gonna be managed.
Are we tracking that?
I guess we'll get into that during one of the meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, well, it depends.
Okay. So what we need is a motion to approve the invoice?
It's, it's coming, it's $125,000.
Okay.
And this is for the, basically for the equipment. It's, you know, and this is also, so this is roughly half of it that are remaining. Once they complete, will be $139,000 after this $125,000.
So you want to go ahead and make a motion, state it all or not?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the payment of the invoice to Hutchinson Recreation Design for the North Park project for $125,000.
Okay, we, I can't do that. Please, I apologize.
It should be a family.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the $125,000 payment to Hutchinson Recreation Design for the North Park project. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the first invoice for the North Park project to Hutchinson Recreation Design, the amount of $125,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
The other park business we discussed is kind of discussing projects that we would like to include in the budget for 2026. So several of those were discussed, and they kind of made a short list. And we're gonna pursue a bit of estimation for those to give information for the council to make decisions in the budget for those. The major one was probably, we're wanting to replace the basketball court at South Park.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Their current one is in poor shape.
That's a very good idea.
Like the actual...
The, well, no, the pavement and the net, we do, it's a whole project. The current pavement's in bad shape. You know, there's alternatives, we could, like, re-asphalt it again, but in short years, it's not lasting very long. And so, we're, we're gonna get an estimate for concrete for it.
Good.
We'll have to see at that point when the cost comes down.
I'm pleased to hear that.
I think the rest of it's mostly miscellaneous things that have been there.
Okay. Zach concluded your report, sir?
It was my report, parks.
All right. Interestingly enough, the next thing on the agenda is economic development. I think it'd be a really good time to have a very short discussion. And I'm gonna lean on Alden Quinn a little bit here. We don't have the Economic Development Committee anymore, and that was basically something that I did, you all were aware of it, that we did, because we felt like if we have an economic development tax board, it would be duplication of effort. I attended a meeting this week, along with Alden Quinn and others. It was a bar from Ms. Holtz at MC ROTD, Mark Lane, Regional Council of Governments, advising us of results of the most recent study, LMI study, that, by going in great length here, plus it's in a position to take advantage of grants, not only for blighted properties, which someone might call, what do you call it?
Sunlight?
Yeah. Blighted properties, to have those removed if owners want to participate, it's a somewhat lengthy process. Also, because of the LMI survey, we were also able to apply for... Also, uh, because of the L M I survey, we were also, uh, able to, uh, apply for, uh, grants relative to electric distribution and water treatment. Now, uh, that's basically some information, but the question is, is do we need to have a, uh, Economic Development Committee that would, that is comprised of one or more board members and other citizen, uh, members that would, uh, report to this Board of Alderman, uh, and, uh, be your liaison, uh, to the, uh, Economic Development Tax Board and also, uh, perhaps under the best of circumstances, participate, uh, in activities that are gonna have to occur, uh, for us to be in a position to apply for grants? It's just something y'all can roll on and talk amongst yourselves, and at the next meeting, I'll bring it back up. Uh, and if, if that's something you all wanna do, then we'll, uh, we'll try to put together a committee. It's very difficult. And when I say it's very difficult, once I say this, I might get fifty volunteers, hopefully. But it's, it's been very difficult, uh, to, uh, define citizen members that wanted, wanted, uh, to, uh, be on the boards, uh, and participate. And I, I kinda get it, you know, uh, they have, they have lives, families, jobs, I get it. Uh, but that's something I'm gonna show, I'll think about maybe, uh, our next meeting, we put on the agenda to have a discussion about whether we should or should not, uh, have a Economic Development Committee that reports to this board. So next thing on the agenda is the Administration Committee.
We did not meet. We haven't met.
Awesome. Uh, next thing will be operations.
Okay. I'm a long one. We met this past Monday here. Uh, I think everybody's got the. First thing we discussed was the, uh, on utility policy for our late fees. I never remember the guy who's staying from, uh, NPUA, that Dennis.
Oh, the Dennis Gussmeyer.
Gussmeyer, uh, said that we need to have our late fees be the same across the board because right now they're five percent for residential and ten percent for commercial. And we need to make them the same, so we, uh, had a motion and, uh, decided that ten percent across the board to make that as a recommendation to the board. And it passed unanimously. So that we need to.
Well, do you wanna wait and do this?
Do we wanna do it all at once?
All at once, maybe.
Okay, uh, the next thing would be the, uh, reactivation fee, uh, to raise that to, uh, currently it's forty dollars a meter, which we're, a lot of times we're losing money on with the labor, with our labor cost. Uh, and having surveyed other communities, uh, having added eighty dollars per utility meter would be more on track. Uh, and quite frankly, we're not trying to punish people. We're, we're trying to, uh, cause like George in Canton, they went from like forty something to eighty or seventy-five or something, and they went from like forty disconnects a month to like four or five. So we're not trying to, it's just trying to save labor, save, you know, headache. Uh, did a motion on that and that passed unanimously. Uh, and then as far as the actual disconnects, um, stating that the, the disconnects will take place on the twenty-sixth of the month after nine AM with no further notice. If a customer has all utility services, the electricity and water will be disconnected. Disconnecting the gas service will take place on the second business day after the twenty-sixth. If a customer only has gas service, the gas service will be disconnected on the twenty-sixth without further notice.
Can you explain that by the, I mean, once again, this, we have a set date in the month of the twenty-sixth. Was there a discussion if the twenty-sixth was on a Saturday or Sunday?
I think we've got that in the current policy. Or is it not, and it's just assumed?
No. There's actually a previous policy where if the two things fell on a Saturday or Sunday.
Holiday.
That it would be new that. But no, that's right, we did change that.
Just, this says it would be on the twenty-sixth, so I'm not sure we should.
And that's the way it is now.
So it's written that'll be done on the twenty-sixth, but the unwritten rule is that it happens on the next business day.
No.
No.
It doesn't.
We've had that.
If it happens, but how currently is if you don't have your payment in before the twenty-sixth, if we're not open, we're still gonna charge you a late fee, is that correct?
Or no, we're not coming up to late fee, we're coming up to disconnect.
Well, either way, I think it's. So if we come in to work on the morning of the twenty-sixth, we will accept all those payments that we have. Anything after that would be subject to disconnection. If the twenty-sixth falls on a Sunday, well, the twenty-sixth falls on Saturday, we come in on Monday morning, we would accept all those payments that we have in the after hour box. What about the ACHs that won't? We accept those too, yeah, we do accept those, we can pull those off. And then anything after that would be subject to disconnection.
And if the twenty-sixth was a holiday, it would be the twenty-seventh?
It would be.
Same thing.
If the twenty-sixth is a holiday, then, uh, it'd be two, first thing that comes up that morning.
Can we clean that up so it says that?
Well, and that's what I even said when I wrote these minutes. It's pretty cumbersome to me. And so.
John could try to figure out how to clean that up.
Because this looks like it's set in stone, that if.
Yeah, usually.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I mentioned when I said something to him when I wrote the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, you'll figure out a way to make that make more sense. Right?
Sure.
Okay.
My first business day on after the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I mean, that's how it works. I mean, it's like, if you run into a bank and you make a deposit on Saturday.
Right, that's close to Monday.
Yeah.
I, I have a suggestion. These changes that, uh, the committee's recommending require modification, uh, to the existing ordinance.
Uh huh.
Upon drafting a new ordinance, you'll have to have, uh, necessary meetings to, to review, uh, the content of the changes that are made, uh, to the existing ordinance. It seems to me that we ought to have at some very near meeting, if not tonight, get a consensus of, of board members, whether they are or are not going to be, uh, in favor of these changes instead of waiting until it's drafted so we can have that discussion.
What we're doing right now, basically.
Well, that's, but we haven't done anything. We haven't said that we're going to support anything. And I'm gonna record, uh, and remind the board, uh, and please, with all respect, remind the board that as a result of the L M, uh, L M I study, uh, low and moderate income, okay, we, we, whether we lack it or not, we have a, a calculation that upon survey qualifies this city or, uh, be classified as low in moderate income. But yet we're sitting here talking about doing something that is going to, and if I'm insulting anyone anywhere when I say it, it's not my opinion, I'm trying to make a point. To people that pay these penalties and the people, generally the people pay these penalties, uh, and, uh, whether they're late fees or, or disconnect fees or whatever they're called. They're the same people that qualify us for the L M I.
Yeah. And they're typically not late because they choose to be, or they're lazy, or they forgot.
They just can't pay it.
It's expensive.
Okay, they just can't pay it.
So I have a question on that, like, and I don't know if utility's in other towns or not, but like, I have, we're outside in Columbia and we happened to just, I don't know, change our debit card or bad or something, two months, two months, I had electricity there. Without, it'd be, it, two months, oh, well, that, that was a water district, but I mean, like, we're very strict on our, on our, I think we're very strict on our ten days to cut you off.
It's ten days, not months of the window. Some people.
It's, it's very, very low. We, we would have to be like, I would have been studying the other towns around us and we definitely are the very, very minimum to come disconnect.
And people are living check to check and you're giving them, get the bill.
And then they have to pay three hundred dollars on top of that to get it turned back on.
Well, most. Right, most of those have gotten, gone ahead and gotten deposits on their account at this point. Uh, but I mean, technically though, the bill is due upon receipt. So technically there's twenty-six days from the time it's quote due to the time disconnect.
Well, I wanna go on record, I'm not in favor of this reconnect fee doubling. I understand there's labor involved, um, there's.
Right, cause it's costing us more than forty dollars to do it.
If a person has or a household has a deposit in place and they're late and we absorb their deposit, do they have to reissue another one?
They would, however, most of the time we are not going to apply that deposit. Especially if we know they have it in the town, for sure, we're not gonna apply that deposit. Uh, if it is a repeat offender, we might possibly, uh, apply that deposit.
But the deposit's gonna come off the bill.
It would come off their bill, yeah.
So I mean, it's.
And you know, when you all were talking about, you know, the, the results of the L M I, I understand that we, we are a, a L M I community. Uh, but if you all would entertain looking at our disconnect notice month after month and seeing the people on there, maybe, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that would be something you'd want to look at and you could just see time after time, it's.
We do have a lot, I know you guys have said.
Like a photocopy.
That's what the discussion was all day. It's not, it's not understanding your bill.
People, I don't understand why they play that game even if they are short on money because it costs you more to do that.
Yeah, a lot of these people, for whatever reason, when they come in and pay, they, they know they're late, they'll pay plus reconnect fees and go on, um.
And we've had people that have never missed a payment in two years and all of a sudden they did. And, uh, it may cost eighty dollars to go out there and turn the water back on. It may cost eighty dollars to go out there and turn the gas on, go in the house and meet with the homeowner and relight a bass. But it takes, in most cases, a keystroke on electric. So I don't think you should have an electric, at least not eighty dollars.
Did we have a discussion the last time we had a big ordinance change that we needed to practice at first to see if it worked?
Let me talk about that. See that happen right as we were coming in.
Yeah.
So if this was in the discussion, then we, it kinda got laid in our lap, like, here you go, and so.
Hey, right, you're right.
There, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot.
We may have agreed to, but not, not what you would have.
I mean, John, what do you think about not having the fees be the same on each meter?
I think it'll be fine. I mean, it's different, like, Johnny said.
Yeah, cause there's not as much involved.
Each meter is a different process.
Yeah, not all the meters are electronic. And I, I mean, sometimes you click it and it doesn't work. And you still have to go out there and, you know.
Uh, gas service, of course, that's the service that takes the longest to reestablish your customer. Once it's off, you know, our technician has to go in the house, check everything for leaks.
And two, don't they have to go in and use a base system on the gas to re right?
Yes. You have to go in the house and make sure.
But it takes two, two people.
Two employees.
I don't know.
Is that correct?
I don't know, but.
Or is it made up?
Okay. I, I, I don't, I seem, I could be wrong, but I seem to recall talking to, uh, either Scott or Adam or even Terry, one person goes in, knocks on the door, they turn, turn the gas off to make sure everything's lit or no gas leak, and then they leave.
So we could, we could reevaluate these.
Yeah, I mean, it's not set in stone, it was just, this is, we're trying to, you know, like, things easier.
Let's.
We certainly wouldn't continue with the number of disconnects.
Yeah, especially with it being the exact same people, I'm not touching on.
But, um, people are, there's always gonna be people who gain the system. And, and the problem is, is if you, uh, if you put those penalties, uh, uh, if you wanna call it that, in place to discourage them, those penalties affect everyone.
And obviously.
And I don't, I just, I, I don't have the right answer, okay?
Obviously, those penalties aren't discouraging them.
What about the system?
Every night, every night.
I, I agree, you just, I just, I'm just very like that idea. I'm the first, my first time to disconnect.
We have one problem.
There is a lot of questions, and at the end of the day, the majority of the people paying the utility bills, they pay them on time. The ones that, the pain point is the repeat offenders, without a lack of better words. But in the instances where it would be somebody under extreme circumstances that could not do it that one month, the repercussions of that.
So why don't you, why don't you guys see if you can come up with something that is basically, uh, addresses that specifically?
Okay.
And if you have a history of, you know, whatever, it might be three times in a row, this many times over the last twelve months, you, but can you do, can you separate out those customers and not run into the same issue?
Like a first offense, second offense type thing?
I mean, your credit, your credit card companies.
I mean, if I paid my bill for four years, two years, five years, whatever, and had no late payments, and then something happened, I don't know why, it was attached to the wrong debit card or whatever, and didn't pay, then we're gonna reach out to you. We would.
I would be.
If you're.
We're just trying to get the ball rolling on.
If you're a customer that always pays, always on time, we see you there with a paycheck bill, we're gonna reach out to you because we know there's an issue.
And I mean, the people that don't pay every month, they're, they're costing everyone else money if we have to go out and do all these things. We're not getting the full amount, i- if, you know, as, as if, as they're saying, if our, um, if it's costing us more to do the reconnects and everything than we're getting.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see some data, I'd like to see some data where, uh, if, if, if we could show that this is the amount of time at our standard labor rate for that department to drive to, uh, disconnect, reconnect, whatever it might be of any of these, that's a totally different, totally different, uh, way of looking at things.
What the average time is per meter.
Versus, you know, what's our standard cost, uh, and you, of course, you, you know, you, you cost it as it, it all well made of talent in, in any direction. Uh, I would be more inclined to recommend something that utilized that cost model versus what I'm, in my mind, is the penalty model.
I guess the other thing that kind of concerns me too, this late fee, because commercial was at ten and residential was at five, is that right?
Uh huh.
We made residential go up to commercial. Why didn't commercial come down from residential?
Yeah, I agree.
Because that would be half of what any other, uh, agency in the area is.
What?
Would be half of whatever anybody else was.
Five percent is low considering other communities. We, uh, we could give that information too. I would, I would be curious to know what our policy is compared to.
Didn't you do a survey?
We did.
Did it have that data in it?
I'll have to look back at it, but I, I did, I did do some information.
Yeah, maybe if I actually had that, if you get that, maybe I can, you know, just double check and make sure that's been changed or, yeah.
We still have copies of the policies when we first did this in the other communities. From like, when we first.
Yeah, we did.
We looked at some, yeah, we did compare.
There you go.
Yeah. We worked pretty hard on it and it was, um, that's fair.
So, you got some homework to do.
I'd be, I'd be, you know, like, if, like on a credit card, if you, if you've never been late and you call and, oh, a guy lost in the mail, surprise, surprise, they'll waive that. But if you've been late every month for the last ten years, they're going to say, too bad, so sad.
However, you know, everything you said is true, I agree with everything you said. But unless we have a policy that says we will call you.
As we said.
If it does, it doesn't amount to anything, it's not, it's not good. You have to have a, you have to have a, it has to be written, that process needs to be written.
That we have to call them?
Yes, if that's what we're going to say, if that's what we're saying we do in order to protect our customers like Lori who was vacationing.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you called someone, so you didn't call them.
Well, if it's not written, it didn't happen.
You do call people, you're trying to do that as a service, but like you get somebody that says, well, you didn't call me.
Well.
Even if they did call and like leave a message, you're, oh, I never got that call.
Were their phones disconnected?
There, we don't have the right phone number for them, but if we made the attempt, if we documented, when we made that attempt, would that be enough to satisfy?
Well, you know, I don't know, guys, whether we need to have a meeting of the board, the board on this. You guys need to go back and have another meeting, come back with some more ID where we can get consensus on it, I'll leave that to you. I'd like to go ahead and continue this meeting and move forward.
We do need to.
I mean, John, how, if we, if we make it a policy in writing that we call people and eighty percent, I don't know, seventy percent of the people don't have good numbers and we call them and we document.
That's their issue.
Maybe go back to Marine Corps style, but have a logbook and write down.
Yeah.
Who you called and then say you're documenting.
And our attempt is one call, I mean, because we can't keep another phone.
We can talk about this later because that's a heck of a burden on them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it needs to be something simple. And would it be?
Let's have a, just have another meeting.
Yeah, let's just do another meeting, we can get this going forward.
Do you need to clean up, do the citywide cleanup?
Yeah, all right, next thing on the agenda. Oh, that's right, that's right, okay, so what we got here?
So. Let's do the.
Really, no, I think.
I want to talk to you about the twenty-one day thing too. Uh, but, okay, citywide cleanup. Okay, here, what about budget? Right now, our current policy is that if they have a, a negative, or that they owe us money at the end of the, of the budget billing term, they don't true up, they don't pay that off, we roll it into the next twelve months, which is basically financing it free. We're carrying, we're carrying their, their balance for nothing. What about the flip side?
Yeah, well, we have percent on their money.
Yeah, we do have that, thanks too.
Yeah, that can happen too, I've got the list here somewhere.
But there's something else we also have to consider, with the budgeting, as it stands right now, is going to have to end with this new system. The new system will not support it.
We did get cleared patient now, when we talked to.
It will?
It will.
It will.
Oh, that's good.
And we won't be, you know, we do our sign up for budget billing November one, so, and that's going to affect this, our new budget year because we won't go live with utility billing until next quarter, you know, second quarter next year. So it would affect their budget billing for that period of time. But we can't do the budget billing.
I was just thinking about, you know, discussing if we should have them true up at the end of the term.
I was just thinking if you could have a separate utility policy.
Let's just, let's keep that there.
My question, I guess, is, would you guys be willing to say, hey, they need to true up?
Not if you're letting other people not true, I mean, not if you're using, if other people aren't being refunded for the overage.
Well, what they, what they do with the credit is they adjust the future payment lower to account for that credit.
So then why would some, so they're not going to increase their next one to accommodate that?
You do, you increase their.
You increase their monthly minimum.
You, if you're in arrears, my understanding, that could become wrong, if you're in arrears, they adjust your payment plan going forward to cover that bulk expected uh, cost for utilities for next twelve months.
Overall, yeah.
I guess the question for me from a city standpoint is, overall, are we ahead or behind on this budget, on the budget bill? Like, if you total it all up.
Oh, that's a good question, right? Can you just score on the sheet?
Because I, I have kind of mixed ideas, because on the one hand, I don't necessarily think we should finance a lot of people over twelve months, you know, because we, you know, the bills, but on the other hand, the whole point of like budget billing is like you have these kind of consistent payments.
I could print the report and send it out to you all.
If they have to make a big payment at the end of the year, that sort of defeats some of the purpose.
There is something we can talk about, because there are a couple that are extremely high where the, the rates have changed or something has changed in the household. Do we meet them midway six months and say, hey, this?
That's what I'm wondering, there's some, because I'd be more interested in some kind of process where we don't let them get too far. You know, like, if you get this bargain, then we have to do it.
So, right here, we're showing a negative, so.
So right now, we're showing a negative, and once again, back to you coming about the, the rate changes, we probably, we raised the rates and like things didn't catch up. Yeah, we are showing a negative.
Yeah. Okay, can, can we, let's discuss all this utility stuff in our special meeting?
Yeah, I was just trying to get a consensus, you know, consensus.
We can do that. Shouts will have a lot more questions than I can give to be.
Cleanup cleanup is something we probably can go down tonight, so we can.
Citywide cleanup, your pricing is in front of you, I did call Cedar Ridge and that is only for fifteen yard dumpsters, the rest are for twenties. So that makes it a pretty obvious choice.
Sure does.
Uh, Merkel's is actually six seventy, they went up ten dollars from the previous year, but that still keeps them at the, at the cheapest rate.
So this should be corrected to six seventy?
Yes, um, and I was proposing to do the same thing we did last year, two dumpsters at a time, up to a maximum of six. And for the dates, to have July seventh to eighteenth, have it at the city barn in the parking lot.
Purple Wave is still going on until July eighth.
Would you rather have it after they get that cleaned up?
How much longer after that would you need?
Uh, I don't know, a week it did, clear out of there, or I can move to stuff.
Well, we just, well, I mean, we want to make it work well for, I mean, you guys have to be involved with this and kind of like keep it.
Once it sails over.
It, it ends on the eighth.
Right.
Purple bus, but.
Yeah.
That's the question.
Seems like a redness, pretty shortly.
Yeah.
Move it out a week?
Just move it back a week.
Push it up a week.
Back, back, or forward, however you want to.
Well, they said not to do it over the fourth of July weekend.
Back.
Because that's a busy.
Move it back, July fourteenth.
So the fourteenth to.
Twenty fifth.
We got stuff.
Fourteenth through the twenty fifth?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that would be two weeks.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we have a recommendation from the operations committee to supply the dumpsters, a maximum of six to at a time through seven fourteen through seven twenty-five, so we need a motion to approve that expense will be six hundred and seventy dollars per dumpster.
I'll make a motion to approve that we obtain those dumpsters from Merkel's for the citywide cleanup.
Okay, have motion on the floor to approve the recommendation from the operations committee for the dumpsters, we have a second?
Second.
Most second on the floor to approve the, uh, recommendation from the operations committee on the dumpsters, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay, what's the plan, are we going to have a special counsel to discuss this, or are we going to shoot back the committee?
I think that what we should do is go ahead and.
Probably do another operations meeting.
Have another operations meeting.
Get all our information together.
Let them review it all.
We need to let all the council members know, because I like.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, oh, um, go ahead.
Are, are we going to discuss the last thing?
It sounds like another ordinance thing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, we can discuss that now, or?
Sure.
Which ordinance thing, Brian? Excuse me, that's.
It would be a bigger, my question. Are the chicken, are we, so our ordinance, that can make them wrong, but we allow chickens, but they got to be in cages. So is that going away?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Not completely, no.
If their grandfather didn't.
If they're, I'm sorry, if their grandfather didn't know, they keep what they have.
How you going to, how you going to monitor that?
Yeah, that.
This is going to monitor, haven't crossed that bridge yet.
I'll note that. I was just going to share this story, I don't want to waste everybody's time, but before I was even city attorney, one time I was here in the city court with Judge Wilson, chickens were, there was a ticket for chickens and I won't name names, but that owner just started laughing and so anybody could kind of try to catch him. It was like, okay, good luck.
Well, one of the things that Chief Zach brought up was the fact that it's drying coyotes into town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and coyotes and chickens are not a good mix. So with the egg prices going up, it's increased, so.
Okay, so your committee report contained a recommendation to the board to amend that current order. So do we need to, how do we need to?
I think we need to revisit this because there was something else that I remembered and I didn't catch this. Because I thought we also took in consideration that if they were going to have chickens, that they were, is it two chickens per person for a household?
Oh, good God.
Well, there's a state, Doc was saying that, there's a state statute that says six.
There's a state statute that says that. So we, if somebody's got five hundred, then that's just way too many. Granted, I'm not going to go out like that.
Running a commercial aid.
Well, then that's it, well, that came up in the conversation, how.
There are people that are selling them in town.
If it's a.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a difference between that, like those big chicken houses.
Well, yeah, yeah.
It's the chickens running around and you said everybody's dodging on Main Street, that's the problem.
And I was getting one yesterday and I swerved and I was stuck in the car.
Drive more than chicken. It could be, I mean, there's been a lot of state stuff over, I mean, there's a state law that prevents homeowners associations from banning chickens and there's, uh, and I don't know if the stories are true or not, but I heard that one of our state legislatures started out running for council in Columbia, Missouri because they wouldn't let him have chickens and that's the start of his political career, so I know that you might stir up some issues there.
So we need to revisit, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Full disclosure, I have some chickens in my backyard.
No, I'm not. I'm surrounded by them, I just don't like being on Main Street, I am concerned about the coyote issue.
Yeah.
Cats and.
Mice, cats, you know, they like cats.
I, I, there's some problems in some places, but.
So are, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, I think we're.
Kicking a bat.
We're going to revisit.
Okay, we're going to revisit that.
We're going to revisit that, we're just going to revisit it.
Let's file on the unit for another meeting.
Yeah, can we go ahead and schedule one while we're on the topic?
Please, please.
Milk on, sounds like a good time.
Twenty first?
Twenty minute?
Twenty fourth of June?
Twenty.
I can do the twenty fourth, yes.
I can.
Six, twenty fourth is Jason? Yes. All right, twenty fourth at six.
Six P M.
And I'll send a text reminder the day before too.
This time I'll try.
Well, it was so funny, fifty, twenty-one, or five.
And then I didn't.
I didn't show up.
I assumed that I had.
I thought you had a speed.
Anyway, sorry, I'm going to tell.
Okay, that's all I have.
One more file, okay, moving right along, Department of Courts, first on the agenda is the Fleech Department, please. Okay, next on the agenda is Water, George is not here. Hang on, see anyone representing those guys tonight?
I had, I wish George was here.
Uh, he's having a funeral.
Because I had a concern about. With numbers.
Go ahead.
Um, on. The eleven, it's like the spreadsheet, this one? On the, on wastewater. Okay, on our oil and grease average, our permit limit is to ten, May of twenty-four, we were us in five, April of twenty-five, we were two, and in May, we're at ten, at our limit.
That's why I suspended it, I think.
No, they're still taking it.
That's not according to his report.
And then the other thing is the one below that. We're actually over.
We're on.
On the, on the.
On the zinc.
But that went from like less than three, less than two and a half, and it jumped, so I don't know if something happened that they know what happened that caused it, but it has been resolved. Because that's a big jump.
Which line?
He's under the oil grease at the bottom.
Under metals, the total copper average. And, yeah, and the zinc.
I think the other thing we should be concerned about is this unaccountable water.
Yeah, that is huge.
Forty-eight point six two water loss that we can't count for in May. It's been twenty-five, thirty, and it's up to thirty-nine, now it's at forty-eight.
Which is equivalent of five point six million gallons, I mean, that's not something.
Even at thirty-nine percent, that's not.
Possible.
No, I know.
I mean, there's some logic involved.
We think you had that before we see it.
I know one thing is, but that seems like even too, one thing he's commented before about is that you have like differences on when certain things are added in versus when they.
Billing.
Bill, and, and versus when it shows up on the report, but fifty-eight percent, forty-eight percent, forty-eight percent is, isn't even a lot for that. That was like, I think he explained in some of those, like twenty percent variations.
It sounds like we need to have some discussions with, with people services on that and find out what, what information they could provide to us to determine what steps, if any, need to be taken.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree that is what you mentioned.
And I, and I knew it, and maybe it's a lot harder even than, than I expect, but I, I wonder if they could give us a little bit better estimates on some of the stuff like knowing like, okay, yeah, we don't always, we don't take this reading until a week after, but if they could give us sort of an es, like a, an estimated number, I don't, it's probably.
Maybe there's, maybe there's a different way of doing it that would give us more accurate numbers. Maybe it's a beginning equipment, I don't know. I'm not qualified to answer those questions, but certainly don't.
Are nailing down a more specific date of when we typically read meters to where it would be more accurate.
Yeah, I agree, so it sounds to me to have a discussion with them regarding that. If the board doesn't mind, I'll go ahead and move on to electric. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Justin Turner, he is our new electric department supervisor. He has.
I'm Justin. Everybody's.
Come on up, Justin, make yourself available here for them to ask any questions.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I'd be the place to go, I don't know, I'm one there a week, but maybe I'd like to see the short term and long.
Okay.
Perfect.
As the deal of the mind, so. So, please ask questions and I'll have to answer why we can give you budget items, money triggers, for these reasons.
Thank you for coming on.
Yes, thank you for coming. He, he has a couple of decades of experience and he comes to all your recommendations and I certainly have very high expectations. You know, I've had several talks, on tour of the city, I'm certainly, I sleep better at night, he may not, but I sleep. You know, many phone calls the chief gets whenever we have electric problem, I'm sure he's happy too. Okay, moving right along, natural gas, I don't see a representative here. Okay, moving right along, natural gas, I don't see a representative here, uh, Street Department, Mr. Rodney Osborne, please. Graces with your presence.
I just got one big thing here, I think y'all got a copy of it. Just estimate for the sweeper before sweeper's sick.
I don't see one.
I have something I wanna say about what I can say.
The sweeper is sick?
And it's sick.
What? What's the issue?
Usually the second motor fire right up, but this day. Then the rattling and stuff, so I had Mr. Painter look at it, works on a lot of stuff. We determined it was an output bearing and shaft, and this is a major deal here.
So you curbed it, you broke it, now you want to.
Well, yeah. But what's funny, but in the book we found rarely ever happens. And then here it is.
What cost?
So I got a question, do. Is there mileage on there, or is there hours, years?
I got both. I have both.
I wanna know, because that's where, every Monday, remember we sang? I don't know how many times it used to pass on my house just for.
Three thousand miles, nine hundred and two hours. That's what's on it, it's twenty seventeen. This thing that we're dealing with is pretty major.
Miles and nine hundred hours?
Nine hundred and two hours.
You can't sweep the street.
Look at the Monday.
Or Mondays.
But anyway, Mondays, you like it on Mondays?
Nope.
I do like, we used to do it on Sundays about two o'clock in the morning.
No, no, they're just not.
Spend that long.
This is something I'll talk to.
Car or some street.
But anyway, uh, it had this noise and a heck of a vibration, so it kind of like that. So anyway, I called the company and talked to John Elliott Supply. Closest one is in Greenville, up there by Kansas City. I said, you got it anywhere, any closer? Nope.
It's probably a pretty heavy part, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, well, for them to put it in and stuff, that's what this is, they would have to take it there. And that thing floored, I went out to South Lake, cause I knew it wouldn't do much.
About two miles an hour.
No, it didn't do fifty-five, but I tried to do my, and I was moving.
Did it shake, shake rattling all of the tank off? What about putting it on a trailer?
Yeah, there you go. I ain't got no listing.
So we'll have to transport it down there, get it repaired, transport it back, and put it back in.
Well, I went out to J C's, I said, y'all wanna look at it? Yeah, bring it out. So I looked at it. No. They said, we can do it, but this is time consuming and we don't know how to do the quote, cause you know, they don't know. They don't know how long it's gonna take, they don't know the parts.
How much they are.
Compared to where you're in on some or something, they fix all the time, they can rattle, rattle. Now this guy, I'll get, he.
He knows what.
He emailed me another flat. He said, sometimes them shafts are easy to come out, sometimes they're not. So hopefully, he said, it might be a little cheaper, might be a little higher.
Did he say when he could get it in for us?
No, he, no, I didn't get that for him. But he's real easy to talk to and stuff, so.
So we only have one quote?
But I gotta fire that back motor up and like up to J C's.
I only have that one. Yeah, it's probably behind.
Yeah, some of them.
So is it fair to say this is very specialized piece of equipment, getting multiple quotes would be probably quite difficult to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause Kevin would like to do, but you know, you just, I knew when that thing something goes wrong with it.
That's the over is, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, especially if they have problems getting them out on the.
He said, sometimes they're amazing, sometimes not so easy.
So because it's specialized, do we only need one quote, or do we need two? Do we need more than one?
You know, I hate it.
This is just a quote for the repairs on.
That's just.
How long have they been out there?
No, yeah, right, it's just a quote, not totally understanding, you know, hire it over, I don't know what a quote is.
And again, it does say on there.
Right, right, any, yeah, I read it. Yeah, but they said once in a while, reading the book, once in a while, eventually you're gonna have to replace it. I know anything worth on.
So what do you need the council to approve? You to move forward on this?
Yeah, cause I don't know if anybody else, I tried to, see, I talked to Kevin, Painter. I just.
Yeah, it's just such a special.
It's special.
Went three places, you got two no quotes. J C's no quote.
Yeah.
Uh, Kevin Pan is a no quote, and he's got an actual quote, so exactly did.
Three quotes. I, I, I make a motion that we approve this quote to, for repair of the, uh, street sweeper.
We have motion on the floor to approve the repair of the sweet sweeper utilizing as a baseline, the, uh, estimate from Elliott Equipment Company. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve the repair of the street sweeper utilizing Elliott Equipment Company based upon their quote estimate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Do we have to make a motion to approve the quotes to get transportation out there for said, street sweeper?
What's your options?
Drive it or haul it.
Drive it. Probably drive it, you mean you have to have somebody.
Fifty-five mile an hour.
Get your pack.
That's a, that's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah.
I was looking for the speed control thing, my foot fell off before I went to Paris for a.
So, um.
Well, you have to spend so many time driving it, too.
Do we have a trailer? We have, we have a big trailer, do we not?
Uh, yes, we got a twenty-foot trailer.
How big is it?
It's pretty tall.
Like, is it one of those fit on? Is this something we ought to like contact Mike Roberts, you know, cause they're used to handling?
Why don't you get a quote from Roberts?
Yeah, I, I thought I'd start with this, and I got, I wonder if I could drive that sort of thing outside of late. I didn't think I'd want to.
They would have given anything to see you drive that down the interstate going to Kansas City. I wanna be on seventy.
You would be on the news.
Cruise control.
Street sweeper on Highway seventy.
We'd have to bulk, we'd have to fasten the, the undercarriage, you know, where it drop it down the sweep. Cause that would, that would make, that would be sparking pretty good shots.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
That would take two people to Kansas City, probably.
Yeah. Well, I mean, like, if, if, if we come back and the quotes aren't forward, I mean, consider, try to find, I think transportation is probably the best option, but.
Would we decide to use the back of life?
Yes, for transportation.
Or it says, reach out to Roberts and see what.
See what, see what they say.
We really have a choice, don't we?
No.
No.
It just comes down to finding three people and getting, getting him, him picking the best one. I think he's already given permission to do that.
I've got the guy that brought my van in.
I, yeah.
He does, he contracts with Amazon, too. The guy that brought my van from.
Oh, yeah.
Never know.
Three quotes, yeah.
I, I'll make a motion to ask, ask you to get three quotes, pick the lowest most qualified bidder.
And ensure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lowest of them qualified.
If they lose it, we're gonna help and fight about it.
Okay, so I'm struggling here.
For the transportation.
Do we need a motion of, of assistance? Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna supersede the board making a decision based on three quotes, and you're gonna ask, you authorize him to make a decision on three quotes, yes.
True, yeah.
So we have motion on the floor to authorize Rodney Osborne to obtain three quotes and determine the best quote, and then issue a purchase order for transportation of the street sweeper to the repair facility. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
I think all of this is good, like, teels you over or something by how it.
If it's more than the, the machine is a worker.
Hundred twenty thousand, right?
Oh, well then.
Only.
And that's a small.
And that's a usual.
Okay, no, no, no.
All right, moving right along, uh, building inspector has given us a report as review. Bob.
Can you come up, Bobby?
Uh, most of these people do not know who you are.
My name's Bob, as I've met most of you, um, just the last couple of weeks in review, I've issued several, uh, fence permits, um, just to ensure that citizens are in compliance with utilities and, uh, certain ordinances. Um, we've got demolition permit out on three twelve Catherine, that's gonna be coming down here in probably the next couple of weeks. Got a building project with the high school, early weight room, that's being drafted right now. That's really all there is to report, just, oh, there's a few other, uh, building projects going on, let's see.
Anything worthwhile?
Um, we've got Tim Hanlon down on Main Street, still a little addition, and then Dennis Murphy over in four D, put a garage, and that's about it. And then Tommy Bach on other street.
Notice Sinclair's adding on.
That's the Hanlon.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep, so he's moving right along with that, um.
Cool.
That's about it. So, anybody needs me, just give me a call, or is it maybe not?
So these houses, um, that you mentioned that are in disappearing, not currently occupied. And then here and I talked briefly last time, just about, about the grant.
Oh, yeah.
That maybe we can u- utilize, but it will probably involve, you know, you helping us certify that they're not meeting health and safety requirements or something like that, so. There's several.
These are occupied.
Several. Well, we couldn't.
There, there are a few.
Yeah.
Have you made any progress on any, unoccupied?
I was asked to check one out the other day, I won't say the address.
Okay.
Um, but I wasn't able to make contact.
Okay.
The occupied ones, I'm not sure there's much we can do, sir.
I'm talking about unoccupied.
Unoccupied, yeah.
I haven't made any progress on pursuing those yet.
And I know they've had a couple of times they went through, uh, in the last few years and had sent out informational letters about like some of the grants and, and we, and we did it once several years ago when I was in council, but I know there's been interest and there were people signed up, you know, with houses that had agreed to like make the payment and but we couldn't put the grants, we didn't get the grants, but.
The CDPG grant is not required, so you have an audit.
Oh, that's a new thing, that's.
Very, like, just happened, we just met a public office and.
Yeah.
So at a future meeting, this board is going to have to make a decision, correct, or, uh, on the project the board wants to pursue utilizing a grant from, uh, them, them. Get confused on all the, uh, all the various, uh, acronyms. So, um, we'll have to do that, decide what it, what we, what we wanna do. We wanna do buy properties, we wanna do something different. And we'll get into that at another time. Anything else?
That's all.
All right, thank you very much.
Wait, wait, do you have a running list of the properties?
Oh, yes, there is one.
Okay, that's all I need to know. I did a drive around town and just snapped a couple of extra pictures, but I'm sure they're on this list, but I just.
There's a lot.
Yes, there is. Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine. Uh, the next thing we have is a, the airport, and I apologize, I'm having a difficult time finding information. Uh, however, I can tell you, they did purchase fuel. Uh, they received a call from their driver, I guess that's the right name, to call them, and, uh, in anticipation of a significant increase in the price of aviation fuel, I was contacted and asked uh, if it would be okay to go ahead and, uh, order that fuel, and, uh, we purchased seven thousand five hundred gallons at a price of three dollars ninety cents uh, per gallon, uh, to put in that tank, and, uh, we took advantage of a window.
Is that higher or lower than our last cost, do you?
I actually think last time was over four dollars.
Yeah.
I don't have it. Uh, Alder Snyder, I do not know that number.
Sounds like a good number. Sounds lower.
What was the purchase price per gallon?
Three ninety.
Hold on.
Was that deliberate and everything?
Yes. Well, that was my understanding, uh, three ninety-two, seven thousand five hundred gallons. Uh, that was the price that was quoted at. It may be lower or slightly higher, because it's like, it's like the spot market. Uh, that was what they quoted by the time that we executed it, may have gone up and may have gone down, we're very close to that number.
I expect that was a very smart.
Well, it's, it's very volatile, um, you know, normally, uh, we would have had that discussion here. Uh, however, uh, we felt that, uh, based upon previous, uh, histories, the board typically approves that purchase your store quite, uh, it's in the, the dollars are in the budget.
It's a pretty shaky half budget.
So, uh, when they had an execute, um.
Well, there's not very many vendors that even.
No, it, it.
No. That's the other thing, and it's, and it's coming from Texas, so you know, I think.
Well, we were kind of planning on doing it, it was just, they were just waiting till they got the amounts that they could like order.
Right, full orders, yeah.
Without having to split it with another, you've done that before, it's very.
Yep.
One, one second, apologies.
It was current events, it was.
All right, next thing we have is.
The campsite's gonna do.
Right, it looks nice. It looks nice.
Maybe did when he already got it burned, they can.
Well, I, if it, if it, uh, if they have as much interest as I hope that they do have, uh, maybe someday in the future, they a, a future board will approve a, a small civilian out there. Who knows? We'll see what happens. Uh, pool, I'm sorry, Mosswood, anything from Mosswood? I know they requested reimbursement for, uh, chemicals.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's just part of the process.
Yeah.
All right, uh, pool? Okay.
Oh, I do have one thing. After you all approved the purchase of that chair, uh, April went to order it and they no longer stocked it. But she can find another one that was even cheaper, I'm a cheaper.
Okay.
There you go, thank you very much.
Yeah, a big bonus.
Win-win, yeah.
And it's came in already.
Every once in a while.
Or part of that came in.
Every once in a while, prices go down. All right, uh, being no further discussion on pool, next on the agenda is presentation of bill approval payments under twelfth, cap twelve.
Probably the lowest accounts payable, the only one I've seen.
Yeah. Only question I had.
Well, if you see the second page.
I did see those.
Hey, page two will give you sticker shot.
Yeah. But those are like.
Wow, but those are.
And M R M A, M P U A, credit card, uh, yeah.
Point on Ricketts.
And that's the annual M R M A payment, am I correct?
That's correct.
And next year, it'll go down a little bit. Uh, the rating, the, the, how would you call it, the calendar rating.
That's right.
Next year, we'll see reduction vis a vis the, uh, part of it.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
And then any improvements that our various departments have, have made relative to their, uh, their safety audits will also show up on the next, uh, next annual fee.
And as long as we keep our losses down, that will help, too.
I have a quick question, because I didn't know it until we talked about it the other night. The agreement we have with Campbell's right now and the police department, does that extend to the next?
Owner.
We haven't really reached out to the new owner. I don't know when that transition takes place, though.
Okay.
But we will reach out to them.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the accounts payable from June, or June eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
One second.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve the council table June eighteen, twenty-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
What was the Ricketts?
Dog food for the dog pound.
Dog food and some, uh, chemical.
Oh, admin. That's falls under admin, the dog count?
It would be for main society.
Oh, that makes sense. Zach, Zach, question.
Oh, Zach.
Uh, as far as tables, from understanding, uh, they're gonna honor most of their bigger chart accounts, allow them to do that.
That's good. That's good.
We'll still be fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Hugh. All right, uh, next on the agenda is unfinished business. First thing would be the library, should have a copy of the lease agreement with the library. This is something that we mutually requested, so we have an understanding, uh, going forward. This is something that we mutually requested, so we have an understanding, uh, going forward.
So it's, we're not charging them, um, and then it automatically reduces unless somebody gets the notice of termination. Those are the. And it also, if the library was to be taken over by another entity, the police terminated, giving us the ability to reissue of the other entity that would be in the state library.
What kind of, uh, legal structure is the library? Uh, that's.
Uh, they're, they're in effect political subdivision, they have their own board that they, uh, appoint or they, they, they recommended, they recommend the appointment of board members to this board who is a political subdivision and approves or disapproves the recommendations. Uh, they have, uh, taxation and spending authority exclusive of us.
They, there's a separate library tax, and that was part of the reason that we had to kind of be more separate on them is because they have their own
Yeah.
financial and they're supposed to be.
Correct, correct.
Clear.
The second, we, we had the pleasure, and I'm not being sarcastic when I say this, they were awesome to work with. So we were contacted by the Secretary of State's office, encouraging us to, uh, uh, speedy, expedite the, uh, separation. Uh, we gave them a timeline, we met the timeline, there is, uh, a final, uh, payment uh, due to them that, uh, our city clerk has been working with their board members to come to a mutual agreement, is that fair to say? So we'll see where that goes. In the meantime, uh, you know, they had, we had started out this process totally different. Uh, long for a short, um, they too are strapped relative to, uh, revenues. And, uh, we have at one point or another agreed that everything in here, but it was never, uh, codified in the form of a, of a contract. And so that's what this attempts to do, uh, is to make it very clear to both parties, uh, we are responsible, these are where expectations are.
I'll make a motion.
I had a question on section three.
I was actually meeting with the library the other day when sending homes was in town, so I didn't get out of come to that, but, uh, yeah, they had some questions regarding their tax revenues and so forth, so we're getting close to getting everything finalized.
On section three, that we shall provide insurance. But their premises?
That's probably for general liability.
General liability.
Building and content.
It's our building.
Building, but not their content.
Their content, we would not.
But they would carry the liability?
Yes, they want to ensure their folks.
Well, but like if somebody fell or something.
If somebody fell on the building. I mean, we own the building, we own the stairs, we own the floors. If they throw someone out the window, it's a different situation. I don't think, I don't know.
Oh, I'll make.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement between the city and Metro City and the Metro City Public Library is presented.
We have most on the floor to approve the lease agreement between the city and Metro City and the public library. Do we have a second?
Oh, yeah.
We have a motion, second and third, to approve the lease agreement between the city and Metro City and the public library. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next thing we have is precision pumping.
I don't have a revised contract for that, John, do you have one?
Okay, that was going to increase the fee up to eleven point four.
Eleven point four cents.
Okay, point one one four.
Yeah.
So current point one zero, the current, uh, fee structure. We'll need to get that, uh, put in the form of a, a contract. Uh, what happened? My recollection is this, they gave us a contract, we agreed to contract they provided to us, even though it was a very minimally, minimally constructed uh, contract. Maybe what I should do is find that and send it to you.
Sure.
This, this may be on me.
And I think within the last month, they have state loans that they deliver.
They've substantially reduced their loads. Well, case in law.
Okay.
Okay, next thing we have, uh, on the agenda is a closed session of this meeting, uh, pursuant to RSMO six one zero, point zero two one, uh, paragraph three, hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting a particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded.
I'll make a motion to go to closed session pursuant to RSMO six ten, point oh two one, section three.
I'll say that.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six one zero, point zero two one, paragraph three, hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting particular employees by a governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I'm sorry to do by vote, I apologize. By roll call.
Alden Smith.
Yes.
Alden Snyder.
Yes.
Alden Seuss.
Yes.
Alden Saunders.
Yes.
Can we make a short, short break? Okay, let's make a short break, when everybody shows back up, we'll get started.